Good evening. It's 7 o'clock. I'd like to call the October 10, 2017 College Place City Council meeting to order. Mr. Dickerson, would you please say our prayer and our pledge of allegiance?
Amen. Father and Heavenly pause here tonight for a moment with grateful hearts and gratitude for all the good things that have happened to the city. And we pray that you will be with us as we turn the corner and make progress and look at the issues before us here tonight. And so give us patience as we take turns here looking at the discussion, discussing the issues we pray and name amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's now our time for public comment. We do have several public hearings as well as some other issues that attendees may wish to make comment on. If you're making a comment on a specific thing during the agenda, I would request that you wait until that agenda item comes up. But other than that, anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Seeing none, I would like to make an announcement. We have Mr. Tyler Anderson's government class from Ola Walla Valley Academy. I talked to the government class on Monday. They're a very bright group of young people who are here to see sort of how city government functions. Welcome to you all.
Thank you for coming. Wonderful.
So we do have a consent agenda before us this evening to approve this agenda, approve council minutes from September 26, 2017, approve code revision to the Economic Development Tourism Advisory Committee, the check register and financials for August 2017, and approving the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Want to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We do have one presentation this evening. We actually had two on the original agenda. Chief Winter is near Ellensburg firefighting once again, so we will present his 20-year pin to him at the next meeting. But our proclamation this evening is whereas Arbor Day was established in 1872 by Jay Sterling Morton of Nebraska as a day set aside to plant trees, and whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion by wind and water, lowering our heating and cooling costs, moderate temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife, and whereas the addition of trees to the landscape has been shown to stimulate economic development, and whereas the city of College Place recognizes that trees and parks are important to enhance the beauty of the city and actively encourages the planting and care of trees throughout the city, and now therefore I, Harvey Crowder, Mayor of the City of College Place, do hereby proclaim October 20, 2017 as College Place Arbor Day and appeal to the residents of College Place to celebrate Arbor Day by attending a tree planting ceremony at 10:00 a.m. at Kiwanis Park with Davis Elementary School students. I further encourage residents to plant and care for the trees in College Place for the well-being of this and future generations. Given by my hand and seal as Mayor of the City of College Place this 10th day of October 2017. So. Mr. Jomont is our Chair of the Parks and Advisory Commission and my neighbor. Sir, how are you? Absolutely marvelous, Jim. Thank you very much. We're going to turn around and take a picture. Okay, good. Thanks.
Thank you.
I appreciate it so very much. Would you like to address the council?
Look forward to participating in College Place's first Arbor Day after participating in many years in Ola Walla. It's a great event. It's a great project, and it's highly sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jomont. So we do have two public hearings this evening. First of those is revenue and property tax levy presentations and public hearing. Ms. Kilgore.
Okay. There, now you can hear me. So this evening, I am bringing forward to you the second statutory presentation to the open council as required by RCW as part of our budget process. So tonight, I'm going to give you a brief overview of our revenues that are projected for 2018, and then we're going to talk about our property tax levy. So I'm going to quickly go through these revenue sources because my slides are a little boring here at the beginning, so I'm going to try to keep it brief. These are the major revenue sources that we have for the city. This is not all inclusive of all of our revenues. I'm just highlighting the big ones for you tonight. So the first large revenue source that we have is retail sales tax, and we're projecting that at just over 1.5 million next year. That includes sales tax that you pay like down at Walmart or Home Depot, criminal justice tax, hotel motel tax, which is new next year, and natural gas use tax. Our second large source of revenue is utility taxes, and this is forecasted at about three-quarters of a million next year. This includes all of the taxes paid through your utility bills, so electric, gas, garbage, cable and telephone taxes are collected here. Next, we have permits and licenses. This is forecasted at just over half a million. This includes connections to utilities for new construction such as water and sewer connections, franchise fees from utility providers such as Charter or Verizon, and building permits and plan check fees. Next, we have what we call state shared revenues. This is about 450,000. This includes motor vehicle fuel tax, so a little bit of the tax that you pay when you buy gas to put in your car, liquor taxes and profits when you buy alcohol. Part of that comes back to the city, local government assistance, and then some criminal Next, we have the EMS levy, which is forecasted at just about 300,000, just a little under, and this supports our emergency medical services provided by our fire department. Last on this page are water and wastewater revenues. So these are actually the revenues from providing your water service and your sewer service to your homes. Okay, and on this last page, we have loans and bonds, and these are debt that is being taken out to pay for capital improvements, mostly water infrastructure next year, so AWAL and a couple other projects. And then grants. These are also for capital projects, but these are focused on streets, parks, and stormwater utility. Oh, that was weird. And these are at about 1.3 million next year. And then finally, what we're here mainly to discuss tonight is our property tax revenues, and that's forecasted at about 1.9 million next year. And I'm going to go through. How do I make this?
Yep.
Do I get it? Just carry on. Okay, so this screen is a little daunting, so I'm going to try to point some items out to you. So this is a calculation that I go through each year to figure out what our property tax levy is going to be. And I'm going to start here at the top with 615,669,946 dollars is what our current valuation of our assessed valuation for next year is. So that includes about 600 million in regular properties and about 7.2 million in new construction that occurred during this past year. So if we take the levy amount from last year, which was right here, 1,355,000, and we multiply it by 101 percent, we get an increase of about 13,554 dollars. And that is basically the increase that we're allowed to take statutorily, the 1 percent limit that the state allows cities to take each year. So this projection has 13,554 dollars in it for a regular levy. And then we have the new construction valuation, the levy amount on that, 7.2 million dollars in new construction, comes to 16,977. So those are the two new amounts for next year, over and above what we had last year. So this is the regular levy, including new construction. With the 1 percent increase, the total comes to 1,385,974 dollars. And that comes to a levy rate of 2.25 per 1,000 dollars in assessed value. So then we talk about our long-term debt requirement for tax collection, and this is, we have a total of 489,750 dollars in debt service on the bonds that paid for the cars project up and down College Avenue and Monroe Street. And so this 0.813955 is the amount per 1,000 dollars of valuation that the levy rate will be assessed at next year in order to pay that debt service. Okay, and now combined together, so we're talking about the regular levy rate that we talked about up here, and we're combining it with the debt rate that we just calculated here. The total with the 1 percent increase is $3, and basically $3.06 per thousand. And when you compare that to last year, last year we were at $3.16 per thousand, so it's actually gone down about almost 10 cents, 9.68 cents per thousand. And then this is just a summary of the total dollar amounts that we will, that we project to collect next year. General property tax is at 1,385,974, long-term debt collections at 489,750, for a total And so overall, you're looking at a decrease because our assessed valuation went up again by about 5 percent. Even though the levies increased by 1 percent, it's actually a lower amount per 1,000 dollars again this year. So this next chart shows you what our assessed valuation has been doing for the past nine years I have on here. So you can see visually, you can see how it's gone up since about 2014, that's about when we came out of recession. So we've had some good new construction, some annexation, and some just valuation increases that have raised our assessed value in the last few years. Last year, there was a 5.9 percent increase, and then this year, a 5 percent increase. The amount that changed this year was 27,246,222 dollars was the increase this year. And then on this page, we have kind of a history of the new construction per year that we've had, and you can see this is kind of really up and down. We had a big year last year, and then I would say more of an average, average year for 2018 valuation purposes at about 7.3 million. This is looking at last, or the 2017 collections as they're being collected right now, so we'll have our second half of the taxes that are due, I think, October. So that's the numbers we're looking at here, but this kind of gives you a good depiction of what, as a city, we actually collect in relation to everything that you pay on your property taxes. So the total amount that the county collected was, or is collecting this year is almost 80 million dollars. And of that, College Place is only getting about 1.8 million. So basically, that's 2.3 cents of each dollar that U.S. taxpayers overall in the county pay, it actually comes back to the city as money to us to spend in our budget. So it just kind of puts in perspective a little piece of the pie that we actually get out of the tax bill. So, and you can see in this pie chart, the large portions of the pie actually go to the schools. So this is school maintenance and operations. This one's the school, state schools, and this one is bonds for schools. So the really large parts are all schools, which is great, but it doesn't go into our budget. So I think that's about it. Yep, that's it. Are there any questions?
Questions for Ms. Kilgore. Mr. Dickerson, up that 80,000 dollars the county collects, how much does it keep?
The 80 million?
80 million.
Well, I think on that last slide, it actually showed what portion the county gets, so let's see. Yeah. So right here, 11 percent goes to the county's, I would say, operating budget probably, and then this is county road, and I'm not exactly sure what that is.
County roads?
It is just for the roads. Okay.
Does it stay within the county? Does that go back to the state house that works?
No, that, I believe that would be dollars actually going into the county budget. Yeah.
More questions for Ms. Kilgore. Ms. Nyahigan.
What would be included in the miscellaneous?
Up here?
It's a small amount, but it...
Oh, I'm thinking maybe like special districts, like mosquito districts and little things like that. That would be my guess. I'm not speaking completely sure there.
Library district?
Yeah, probably library, mosquito. Thank you.
Ms. Selby.
So just to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, we're allowed to raise our levy by 1 percent, not raise our rates by 1 percent. So it's 1 percent of the total amount that we get?
It's, let's see.
So like as a taxpayer, why, I'm not automatically going to go up 1 percent if, if all the property values dropped and we still went up by 1 percent, I might have to pay more than 1 percent, but if, if we get more property value, I might pay less, which just looks like so is happening now.
Yes, because it's 1 percent of the amount we collected the prior year is what we can add on. So if the valuation went down, then yes, each person would end up paying more, and vice versa. Like the situation we have now, values went up, so each person's actually paying a little less, even though we're collecting more in total.
Interesting. I always thought it was the rate, so good to know.
Mr. Peterson.
This is very timely information. I think just the last week or so, we received a real car that owned a home, and it had the new appraised value. And I'm a little surprised that it went up with 5 percent over the prior year's accurate, I think, the valuation.
Ah, let's see. Yes, that includes annexations too.
Okay. So I'm a little surprised, I mean, 5 percent is a small number, but I am a little surprised that it's that little when we talk about coming out of 2008 and the housing values and whatnot, and what some of us have seen personally, but anyway. And once again, you're relying on the county?
Yep, these are numbers that I got from the assessor last week.
Yeah, so these are, these are rock solid numbers.
They, yeah, for the most part. They'll change a little bit between now and when the levies finalize. There's always a little bit of adjustment, but these are pretty, pretty solid.
Yeah, good, okay. Thanks.
Mr. Dickerson.
Just to back up what Lauren was saying, the way I understand it works, the market value, if it goes up in real estate, seems to be pretty worn right now. And so when the assessors go out and they reassess your property, they get followed up by state inspectors, and they have to be 100 percent of the market value. Is that the way you understand it?
I actually don't, I don't have a lot of knowledge in that area.
Other questions for Ms. Kilgore? Seeing none, I'd like to open the public hearing for the 2018 Revenues and Property Tax Levy Presentation in Public Hearing. Anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward, state your name and address. And a second time, anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council on the 2018 Revenues and Property Tax Levy, and please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council on the 2018 Revenues and Property Tax Levy, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing? It's been moved by Ms. Selby.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Nyahigan. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearing is closed. Mr. Ricard is going to address College Place Municipal Code 17.36 and 17.6, procedural code, procedural code update as a result of adopting the hearing examiner system 2013.
So a couple of months ago, I brought a similar proposal to you to correct the PUD section of Title 17. But a couple weeks later, after that PUD correction was made, I discovered another error in zoning amendments section, which led me to look further under all of the authorities that are assigned in hearing examiner to make sure we didn't have the others, and that's where I stumbled upon the fact your own part one. So this should clear up all of the errors that we had back in 2013, 2013, when we went to the hearing examiner system. What both of these sections of the zoning code will do is a reference, the change is referenced to Title 19, pointing the authority to the hearing examiner, point to notification processes and so forth in that are in Title 19, which is the consolidated development code. They're all procedural, and nothing significant, you know, procedural corrections.
Questions for Mr. Ricard? Seeing none, I'd like to...
Thank you.
I'd like to open the public hearing for College Place Municipal Code 17.36 and 17.60, procedural code update as a result of adopting the hearing examiner. Anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council, please step forward and state your name and address. And a second time, anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council on College Place Municipal Code 17.36 and 17.6, procedural code update, please step forward and state your name and address. And one final time, anyone wishing to address the College Place City Council, College Place Municipal, I'm going to get this right, Municipal Code 17.36 and 17.60, procedural code update as a result of adopting the hearing examiner system, please step forward and state your name and address. Seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Dickerson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to action items, Ms. Kilgore, property tax levy.
Okay, this is the action item to follow up to the presentation I just gave. I am proposing in this action item that you approve the 2018 levy resolution that I've prepared tonight, which includes the 1 percent increase as allowed by RCW, and actually results in a decrease to everyone's tax bill because of the increased assessed value. So what it actually does is, this resolution says that we would collect, use the red pointer, a total of 1,885,724 dollars. And then that is a result of a decrease of $9.68 per 100,000 of property value in the regular levy, and another $1.56. Where did it go? I can't define this. Oh, right here. And a $1.56 decrease in the debt service amount for a total decrease per 100,000 of And in your packet, you have a copy of the resolution and a copy of the levy certification that will be signed by the city clerk if you approve.
I move that we approve the 2018 levy resolution number 17-029.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Nyahigan. Any further discussion? Mr. Dickerson.
Just for the students sake that are here, this whole discussion of increase and decrease and so forth, here's the real skinny to the issue. You have property taxes that are up to a certain limit by the county. We are allowed to add on to that, just like we're allowed to add on to utility taxes. It used to be that we could add on 6 percent. So we're actually taxing your property more than it's assessed at, and that's the, that's kind of the liberty we're given to do it. So it going down this year just means it's down a little bit from what it was up last year, so it's just kind of a fine matter of semantics here that we're talking about. So we are, we are adding to the top limit of tax that the county assesses. We're adding on to that as an additional tax.
Further discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
I would request that the council approval ordinance number 17-039, and then in chapter 17.6 and 17.60, as pertains to the use of the hearing examiner for review and approval procedures for manufactured home, parks, and re-zonages.
Questions for Mr. Ricard? Is there a motion? Mr. Peterson.
I would move to approve ordinance number 17-039, and then in chapter 17.36 and 17.60, as pertains to the use of the hearing examiner for review and approval of the procedures for manufactured home, parks, and re-zonages.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Selby, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Solid Waste Agreement with Basin Disposal Incorporated and an ordinance update, Mr. Hartwig?
We've brought to the council two times now, a proposal to change the contract with Basin Disposal, basically just bring it up to current standards, and he had, he had two objectives, really. One was to get all of his contracts with agencies that he have in a similar format. And the second one, and for us, that I see as a benefit, is what we call unlimited collection. If the council does approve what we're discussing tonight, effective January 1, we would go to unlimited collection, and qualify that, that's, you gotta abide by the way they want it placed and bundled or bagged or boxed. But other than that, it pretty much allows for, they'll take bundles of brush, they'll take refrigerators, they'll take white goods and all that type of stuff, and it will be at one fee, which I think is a positive thing for this community. It should help maintain a clean community and get less excuse not to participate in the collection and so forth. So, I would truly recommend that the council would approve this contract, I think it's the best thing for our residents. And then, the second thing, we went to the ordinance to try to make it consistent with the agreement and with some current standards that we're working with. So, you'll see that in the ordinance proposal as well. I ask a few questions.
Ms. Selby?
So, does this include the university still doing their own collection, or?
Yes, it does, right now. We'll still work on it, but they offer us to do that.
So, but, if you come to an agreement with them, would we have to amend the ordinance, or is it flexible enough to?
We might have, I don't think we'd have to do anything with the ordinance, okay, we might, we might have to do something with the agreement that allows them to do that.
Okay, fair, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Would you comment on the size of garbage containers?
Okay, so, with unlimited collection, what would happen on around the first of January is, right now, there's 32-gallon containers, 64-gallon containers, and 96-gallon containers. The object of unlimited collection is to limit the driver getting in and out of the truck all the time. So what would happen, come the first of the month, is they will be changing out the garbage cans to 96-gallon containers. If, now, those that have 32s right now would be allowed to, they'd be grandfathered in and can keep the 32s unless they start putting extra stuff out on the, buy those cans for collection, because it does not pay for them to get out of the truck if you got unlimited and you got a 32-gallon container. So if that, if that were to be a consistent extra bag by the garbage cans, then they would change that. And if the account changes, then that can will be pulled and a 96 will be delivered.
Mr. Peterson?
You may have already done this, I apologize. So, this will be communicated, it has been or will be, to the individuals, so I'm assuming what, that after January 1, the old can is dumped, picked up, and a new, different one right behind it, is that kind of the idea, or? Yeah, and I have to say that way, or that with BDI, and that transition will happen, similar to what we did when we first contracted out. And, did you want to speak to that, how that transition happened?
Actually, I would have to give more information, but the process-wise, it would be essentially a truck coming behind one of the garbage trucks, and the can gets dumped, we'll replace it, right there on the normal route. As to specifically when that would happen, check with the scanner.
It's a lot of opportunity to remodel our houses if we can.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Dickerson?
So what's the basic difference in price for a customer that has a 32 and what would probably do, how much would go up per month for the basic if we went to 96? I'm just generally...
I think, I think the bigger thing to do to understand is that, right now, if you have a 32 and you put an extra bag out one time in a month, you will have paid what a 96-gallon container cost for the month.
So that's why it's important to know what the cost of the basic is. I mean, if it's $16 for a 32 and $40 for a 96, then, I'm sure they'd like to know that.
The discussions with the pricing, through the draft, until we get history, my understanding was the same with the national...
Yes.
...increase in garbage, then we'll go back and revisit the price, but at the beginning, it should remain constant?
That is correct, we're not, we're not changing any prices with the addition of the new contract in about 18 months to two years, once we get history on how much more of the disposal fees will be changing, then we will come back and address the rates.
Now, I do want to clarify that if the tipping fees go up in the landfill, they will be coming to the council here in November with their annual report, and that portion of bill will increase.
Right, right.
Any other discussion? Questions? I'm going to approve ordinance number 17-040.
And we need to approve the agreement?
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded... Excuse me. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify the same aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bobbitt, eventually I'll get around to not coughing. Is there a second motion?
I move that we approve the agreement with Basin Disposal Incorporated for the collection of solid waste.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Ms. Nyhagen, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rosatello?
Hey, thank you, Mayor. This agenda item is for approval of Municipal Code 3.48 for a library card program, and this builds upon a discussion we had a couple of council meetings ago, where our first inclination was to do a code that would limit it to low income. However, figuring out the time it would take to essentially check all paperwork and everything else, it really came down to the point of that we have money set aside each year to do this program. If you're a resident and you show a driver's license, or your rental form, or what have you, that's good enough, and in essence, you would get the, a check to be made out either to the city library or the rural library district. And I would mention that for naturally for fiscal year 2017, there is no money allocated or that, that's a point of discussion as we get deeper into fiscal year 2018. This is just a form of the code to just formalize it, because from what I found in the past, there was nothing really, it was done, but it wasn't really in the code of the law, so...
Questions for Mr. Rosatello? Mr. Dickerson?
So, we have a committee meeting, and we had a presentation, discussion about the library issue. I don't remember the idea of accommodating both districts, the Walwalasley and the rural, coming up in that discussion. Can you, where did that idea come from to accommodate both?
That, that was initially mentioned at a previous council meeting, and I couldn't look it up what meeting it was. It was a while ago, because at the time, though, the premise was that we would do checks to prove that in fact the folks were low income. But then, it was the desire of this council, and also looking into it administratively, that that would add a lot of time to administrate than that. So, as we would market this, we would really try to encourage low-income folks to apply for this, but that's where this came from, though.
So how does, how does the reimbursement compare, the total check that will be written to?
Well, for the rural library district, it's $40. For the city of Walwal library, it's 67. And the idea is that the check would be issued basically to city of Walwal, the library, or the rural library district, because we were trying to get around the whole concept that for folks who are lower income, they really do have a problem coming up with that money to cover that.
Okay, that sounds good. And the last question, so would it be inappropriate to discuss how much we want to stick in the budget, the council wants to stick in the budget for that item?
I mean, I would happily advise that the council would discuss that as part of the overarching fiscal year 2018, because there's a lot of inputs and outputs where I don't really think it'd be advisable to do this as a standalone thing, it's just that we'd go to have the code in place.
So, if we approve this night, it doesn't mean that we have intentions of funding it?
Well, well, I personally believe we have intentions of funding it, otherwise we won't take trouble, right?
How, what the availability of money is for the project?
Yeah.
Mr. Peterson?
What I remember from the discussions also is that we do not know the volume of how many people are going to participate. So that made it very difficult to budget, because we're not, we sort of know maybe how many people are going to use the service now, but what we don't know is a year from now, or two years from now, how many individuals will actually, will never go down, will go up? And so, I'm guessing that right now, this would be just out of the general fund?
Yeah, correct.
Any, right, to cover this?
Yeah.
Ms. Selby?
I have a couple of questions. So, if we set this up, it seems like this has always been something that we struggled to fund. Would it then be possible for groups to do fundraisers, to put money into this system? I mean, could they, if it's set up this way, then would that have like an account that people could say, hey, here's 300 bucks to go towards that?
There would be a line I'm set aside toward this, since it's more formalized in the code, that would allow the ability to do that.
Okay, good. And then, because I know a lot of people are really concerned about the availability for library, and when we had the joint workshop with Parks and Rec and the...
Plan.
Land, thank you, groups, there was a lot of discussion about perhaps trying to put together a group to, to look at actually doing a library levy, because in a couple of years, we would have the ability potentially to do something similar to what we saw tonight, where our taxes would go down more than enough to cover it, so we could add in a library levy and still have taxes go down. Is there anything more happening on that? I have not heard anything more from some of the people that were talking about being interested in that.
I mean, there's some preliminary discussions going on still between the various bodies, nothing concrete yet. I would say that we're just starting the comprehensive plan and processing as we're getting deeper into that. I do think that's a pretty big discussion point as part of that overarching project, where that's going to help guide how this goes.
Great, because I would love to see us coordinate some of our, like Parks and Rec and library, kind of all together.
Yeah.
But this is a good step in that direction.
Mr. Peterson?
I'd move to approve ordinance 17-041, in many chapters 3.48, library card program, to the College Place Municipal Code.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, seconded by Mr. Bobbitt. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Rosatello?
Okay.
Support for Pacific Power Foundation grant application.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. In this item, I'm asking the city council to approve a resolution, support of a granny application, Pacific Power Foundation. As you all know, through our work with Economic Development Commission, we're always looking for ways to more instill a sense of community, have greater community events, like with the farmer's market we've been doing, and the plans for winter festival. There has been a discussion about having basically an inflatable outdoor movie screen to show movies at the parks in the summer. And Bill Clemmons, who is a Pacific Power representative, and he's also a member of our Economic Development Commission, he informed myself that they have a small capital grant program that this would fit in nicely for. There would be zero match by the city, it's just a grant request to Pacific Power Foundation. And I would say that we are going to go back to Pacific Power Foundation next summer, because they, they basically have various themes where they do call for projects, and next summer is one specifically themed for civic uses, and next summer we'll ask them for some grant funds for Lions Park, but for this tranche of grant money, this seemed to be a good project.
Questions for Mr. Rosatello? Mr. Dickerson?
So, do you find system theater system? So, we're not going to build a theater?
No.
We're just going to have a system with a screen?
Yeah.
An inflatable screen?
Yeah.
And the chairs, and maybe some kind of gathering place?
Well, I mean, we have fold-out chairs, folks could just take a blanket as well and sit on the lawn. In fact, where I worked at at the city of Beaver, then they did exactly that, where they would put an inflatable screen, people would chill on the lawn, or get, bring lawn chairs, or use the chairs that the city had, and then they coordinated and getting food trucks and so forth out there.
So, would you need a sound system?
A sound system that comes along with this?
Does it?
Yeah, as does the Blu-ray player.
And would you need somebody from the Parks Department to be there to operate this program?
As far, as far as to operate the movie and put it on, someone would be, need to be there to initially put the movie in and so forth, but that's all it is. I read over the materials, and it's just pop out of the Blu-ray in 20 minutes, so...
Mr. Bobbitt?
I would expect us to go along the lines of what, actually what city Beaver then did when I worked over there, they had movies in the park once a month, and they had that basically May through September, so...
Ms. Selby?
Would you envision groups being able to like rent it? Because I know various clubs and the high school and stuff have talked about having outdoor movie nights, so if we could allow it to be rented, that might be...
I believe that would be a good idea. Where I, where I worked at, city of Beaver, then, they did that, so...
As long as it didn't interfere with our plan, wouldn't it?
Other questions for Mr. Rosatello? Mr. Peterson?
Sounds like a great idea, I would move to approve resolution number 17-030.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Ms. Selby, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously, from movie theaters to dump trucks. Mr. Hartwig?
As you know, we lost our dump truck out of the wastewater plant, and our existing dump truck that we have is a 1988 Chevy dump truck that is hard to get parts...
for and it was wearing out. I don't need a new dump truck, what I need is a newer dump truck. And so we've been searching around the northwest to find dump trucks. So my mechanic, my food manager, has gone to or talked with dealerships in Pasco, Pendleton, Spokane, and Seattle to see if they have available dump trucks. What we found was the Puget Sound Truck Sales in Tacoma had purchased a bunch of used dump trucks from, I believe Kent, but I don't know the location, but from the municipality. So in your packet, you should have pictures, this is just a picture of a dump truck that they refurbished. So they get these dump trucks in and they refurbish them, this is kind of the setup that you would see once they're done. So we have, we went up there and we priced out, or looked at and rated five dump trucks. They won't haul them, and so this has been, he's been there about a week and a half ago. We told him we'd be very interested. So in the packet, I think you've got the list that shows what we, how we rate them and so forth. We talked to the person today, or yesterday was, and they still have those two, number one and number two trucks available. So what we're doing is asking for your authorization to purchase, hopefully this two thousand four number one, Peterbilt, dump truck. What we'll do with our old one is take it and put it down at the wastewater treatment plant, so they can haul their sludge and so forth, which they don't need a great truck right now. And we can use it. This truck has a Solversander bed addition and a blade that we can add to our fleet if we need one. So you might see the price out here at seventy-six-five on the dump truck. That is, if they sold it to just general people, they thought our price would probably be around sixty-five to seventy thousand. So I would love to do another empty dump truck.
Questions for Mr. Hartwig. Is there a motion?
I would mainly approve the purchase of a used dump truck from Puget Sound Truck.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, seconded by Mr. Peterson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Off you go to the truck yard.
Oh, I will say, they haven't refurbished it yet, so it'll be, it'll be six weeks or so before we get it.
Chief Demarest, repeal and replace under Title IX, Public Peace Morals and Welfare.
Good evening.
You're looking rather natty this evening, chief.
Thank you very much. So what we're trying to do here is repeal and replace Title IX, Public Peace Morals and Welfare, Chapter nine oh four, for our state criminal code provisions. And basically, Chapter nine oh four was created in nineteen ninety-eight, and we're trying to clean up the language and add just a few things. If you, there is an example copy, it's several pages long, you'll notice that they'll say adopt every single criminal or RCW router. What I did is adopted some best practices in other agencies, and we just adopted that law, except all RCW and C.R. Washington, and will also accept the, any type of fees that go along that, along with states. So it's basically adopting everything. That's pretty much it, just basically cleaning up the language, covering ten pages, two pages.
Questions for Chief Demarest. Is there a motion?
I approve an action, motion to develop an seventeen dash zero six, repeal the Police Department Code, Chapter nine point zero four.
It's been moved by Mr. Peterson, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Nyhan again. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Chief Demarest, repeal and replace.
Yes, thank you again, repeal and replace in the Chapter two point two four, which is the police department. And what this does specifically, it covers duties, powers, and authority. And there were some things that we realized that we needed to clean up the language on, there were some things that were missing, like reserve deputy position, we didn't have any of the information in there, what that might look like, clean up the language on, oh, yeah, also some information on self-service and powers and authority, and we also added the authority to support service officer. For instance, if we were, if we aren't going to be able to get a code enforcement officer in the future, we'll have provisions for that. And again, this just cleans up the language from the past.
Questions for the chief. Is there a motion?
I would move to adopt ordinance number seventeen dash zero three seven, which repeals and replaces Chapter two point twenty-four, police department duties, powers, and authority.
It's been moved by Ms. Selby, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Peterson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Ms. Doring. Personnel Manual, Phase Two, Technology Use Resource Policy.
All right, I'm here tonight just to let you know that the next council meeting, as an action item, we'll have the second phase of the personnel manual. It's Chapter seven through eleven, it covers benefits, care of administration, personal conduct, and work policies and practices. So it's there for you to review. And then also along with that, we'll have a new technology usage resource policy that will also be there for you to review. And what I'm next to.
Mr. Rizzatello.
And I would just like to add, per the discussion with Personnel Committee the other day, with the information technology policy, there is no glossary and the quick notes summary section that's on there, so please review that.
And Phase Two has been through the Personnel Committee as well.
Ms. Selby.
And as I'm Chair of the Personnel Committee, I would like to say that the staff did an excellent job in putting this together, it was very clean. We had a few comments that we discussed, which they then updated, so I encourage you to read over it and look forward to approving it soon.
Is, seeing none, thank you very much, Ms. Doring. Mr. Hartwig. From Dump Trucks to Restrooms.
Back in two thousand fifteen, city council approved this short flat, once part of short flat, was segregated off what we call Lot Number Two, which was where the old bathrooms were located. The new lab bathrooms have been, the facility's been installed, they're not open yet, we're still working out some little details, but the courts are getting used extensively. A neighbor on the corner of their park sent some pictures of a whole bunch of kids playing basketball, and just seeing that going on is exciting, so. But we're here to see if the council is interested in disposing of what is located here in Lot Number Two, where the old bathrooms were.
Could you use the red pointer for the audience, so they have an understanding?
Yeah. Lot Two, right there, that's where the old bathrooms were, they're not usable. As a matter of fact, they've been shut down all summer. So the benefits, in my mind, to selling it, one is a safety issue. Before, when we had the bathrooms over here and the park over here, somebody who needed to use the restroom, they had to cross the street. Now everything for the park is on this side. It's a safety issue when they're going or trying to cross the street, especially young kids, with a curb right here. It's just, it's just better now that we've consolidated the facilities in one area. Other advantage is we can sell this lot, we can use the proceeds to do other enhancements in the parks, and I think it would be a good idea. So this, so this paying utilities right now, but just the sale of the proceeds would be a benefit to do other things that we want to do in the parks. Don't have that yet, that would probably go through the Parks Committee, Parks and Rec Committee, but that revenue would be used for that purpose.
And this is a buildable lot?
This is a buildable lot.
Mr. Peterson. Two follow-up questions. First, how far along are the new bathrooms?
Well, the bathrooms themselves aren't there, okay? Now we've run into another technical issue, is the electricians have done their part, but the restroom wasn't tagged, because it's a constructed building that is supposed to be approved by an L and I inspection. Those, it was purchased from Idaho, and so our inspectors will not approve it until it's tagged. And so then we've got to get that figured out. Other than that, we've got this sewer, the water's hooked up, but we can't get approval on that.
So, I haven't been over there, describe the building, is it portable, is it permanent?
It's permanent, it's a concrete, fully concrete building, it has unisex bathrooms, one on each side, and the utility room is.
So is purchase in Idaho new?
Yeah.
And so it needs a cement floor to wrap the walls on?
Nope, it's all, it's all solid. I mean, the utility room, they have to pour that floor portion, but everything's, they just draw it in.
Is that going to be finished by the grand opening?
We hope.
Okay, what is coming up in this?
Yes, it is.
Okay, second question, the Lot Number Two there on the inside corner is buildable, as you say, and what zoning is it, is it built by family?
I believe it's our safety.
Safety?
Yeah.
Okay, and it has enough depth and frontage and width and everything to put a house on?
Yes, when we created that lot back in two thousand fifteen, we made sure that it was a built-in lot.
So if we did sell it, it would be sold with utilities already installed, water and sewer?
With the connection fees already paid, you know, the water meter's already there, sewer, they would have to connect to that sewer.
Right.
Because that, the ultimate goal would be to, right now, well, first off, it would have to get appraised if the council's interested in moving that way, and then once that, it would be out of bid.
What's the elevation difference between that and the street?
I'd say you probably got a couple feet.
Eight feet?
I don't know, it's just, it builds up.
I was thinking of the one.
Especially on this corner of here.
Yeah. Mr. Peterson.
Yeah, I mean, I'm all in favor of proceeding with this, and I'm sure, you know, obviously to not, you're going to have an upkeep issue from now on, and so, I mean, it's off here to deal essentially.
Mr. Bobbitt?
Yeah, that's a spot that I've kind of thought, seen, said, what are we going to do with that? And as far as parking, a lot of times you have the park on that side of the road, ten seventy yards of the park, but I think it's that old street.
The road.
But I was wondering, that would make a nice picnic spot. You know, we have that little gazebo area, picnic area, but.
Again.
It's a nice kid area.
Again, for us, if we wanted, I think we have greater value for our, for the parks program, to be able to sell that lot, put that money to use, to improve, improve the parks. I understand that it can be used, but again, I hate to have the concept that we're promoting people across the street back and forth on that curb, it's pretty silly.
Ms. Selby and then Mr. Peterson.
Well, I was just going to comment from an engineering standpoint, that I think we want something over there that does not attract kids from the park. So selling it for like a house or something would make a whole lot more sense, because if you're going to try and have a picnic there, the kids are going to want to run and play, and they're going to be running back and forth across that street, and it's just, I think, really dangerous. So I'd love to see more little parks in the city, but I just don't think that's a good spot for it.
Mr. Peterson. Okay, question maybe for Sarah. If we were to sell that property, is there a way to protect and dedicate the fund so it doesn't get absorbed and continued for other purposes?
I mean, we would earmark it for use in parks. We would earmark it for use in parks, and that would be something that I would internally track, but it would not just get absorbed and lost.
Other questions for Mr. Hartwig? Oh, Hartwig.
I would just want to add something to monies being collected from parks, actually, in the abbreviated Park Code update, the parks, Arbor Recreation Board went over, there was actually a section in there where money being collected from parks or selling park-like land that would be flagged for park usage only. It's actually in the, right now, it's not on our code in this update that we're going to be recommending it is.
Thank you, Mr. Hartwig.
So we'll be back in, I don't know, for the next meeting, but the next couple meetings.
Mr. Rizzatello.
Okay.
Repeal and replace Chapter twelve twenty, some parks.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. With this agenda item, please take a look at the proposed code. This went through the Parks Arbor Recreation Board the last couple of months, and they unanimously voted to recommend it to city council through September twenty-ninth meeting. It has clearer definitions, also provision discussing liability and limiting it on the city. Also, for the Assembly of Minors, just that there needs to be an adult run, if there's like an actual organized advertised Assembly of Minors. And then also rules governing city parks, and then the ability to do exclusion orders for folks who have repeated violent behavior. And then the, also, the any money collected from said park usage or selling park property, that that does get tagged for the parks function. So please review it, and if you have any questions, shoot me an email or we'll discuss it. Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Rizzatello. Thank you very much, Chief Demarest, you're on again with, I hate to use the acronym, WASPIC-LEMAP, Washington Association of Sherriff and Police Chiefs Law and Enforcement Management Assistance Program.
Law and executive management assistance program, yes.
Ah, close enough.
What this is, is basically an audit, what we did is we had WASPIC come in and provide this audit of our police department, and it's very thorough, the seventeen chapters that we go through, they were from the admin, role and authority, which I just dealt with one of the issues, fundamentally not with approving the new police authority, so they still got to clean that, they pay us. It goes over use force, records retention, usual occurrences, health and safety, recruiting and training, performance management, code of conduct, internal investigations, operational standards, investigations, evidence of property. So they go through a very detailed audit, they interview every officer in the agency, they talk to officers as well, and they turn everything else down. It's really impressive, they come in for two days, these are executives from other agencies, some people in size, some larger in size, all accredited agencies, and they're experts in their field, they're from these categories, and they come in and they value that. And they tell us some of the things that we're doing great, and then they tell us some things that we need to work on, and then they tell us about a couple of things that are hair on fire, issues that we need to look at. And one of those issues, actually, staffing, and, or whether they're staffing this department. Another couple of the issues that is evidence of property, evidence is, the audit was very involved, our evidence and everything is fact we did. The problem is, is that we're not getting rid of evidence, you have to prove the evidence You have to prove the evidence and property that we need to get rid of. So we're working on that as well. It's difficult because it's all tied back to your power, and you don't have the time to do that. So it's a good read. You can see I highlighted all the different chapters. I've got to go through it. I've already had meetings on how we can better manage some of these things, like the record that was approached, meaning if you had, and it went really well. We're only knocking a lot of aside apart. Everybody's going gamebusters on this. So this is kind of our map. It's going to kind of our roadmap to drive us in the future, and ultimately, our goal is to be accredited, and I think that should be the goal of every law enforcement agency in the state, and that's certainly my goal.
Questions for Ms. Shelby.
When it comes to your evidence backlog, do you need a commissioned officer for that, or could you frankly hire someone who's a little bit cheaper to work for that?
Yeah, that's a great question. So right now, we have an intern that is helping detective maintenance, and what she's specifically doing is going through and identifying property that we can get rid of. She's sending letters out to people that may still have some possession of that property and seeing if they want it. Because a lot of it's lost property, found property. If they don't want to get rid of it, we can either destroy it or we can sell it. And the second part of that question is, is that we, you know, our budget for 2018 is to hire a court enforcement officer slash evidence person slash animal control person. So it may be a little bit harder to prioritize a person.
This is going to be a busy person.
Busy person. So I just, we just work on the job description, and it will be a unique position for the right person.
Great.
Yeah, great question.
Please, I mean, it really is a very extensive report. The chief has a strategic plan that he's working through on getting the hair on fire stuff fixed, and then the longer looking at that, I think it's a great one for us to go through. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Zatell, Highway 125 Myra Road Tiger Grant. I assume Tiger is an acronym for something?
Yeah, yes, but I don't remember. And I apologize to City Council for the quick turnaround on this, just because City of Walla Walla is in the process of submitting a grant, because most of this is all their project, but it has a very unique implication for us. So in their long-term comprehensive plan and their transportation plan, they've had marked that with the Myra Road and 125 intersection, that they would like to potentially turn that into a roundabout and extend Myra. Now, why I mention that that's interesting and a unique implication for us is that since I've gotten here and since before that, because I know Pat was dealing with Walla Walla, one of our big things with Commercial Drive is when we're attracting retailers and businesses. They really want that intersection with Myra Road fully functional. So if you're heading northbound on Myra, you can make a left and actually go down Commercial Drive. And a lot of the deals that I've been working on are like held in flux right now because of that. Walla Walla approached me about this project, and one of the first things I said is, that's fascinating, but if we were to do like a leather support and so forth, can we have a fully functional Commercial Drive in the mix? Because we need that. And they have communicated that to me, that that would be a part of this. So that is why, just to bring you up to date on this, they are planning to submit a Tiger Grant for that intersection. We'll see if they get it or not. They're looking for leather support from us, leather support, that's really all this. And just be aware on the chance that they did get the Tiger Grant. Then talking with Nabeel, they requested us around like $10,000, which my personal point of view, if we get Commercial Drive fully opened up, I can get about three businesses right now who would go on that if it's fully functional. That's what's really holding us up on the remaining hours. So yeah, this is very southern movement, but I just wanted to keep City Council aware. The Tiger Grant for them is due basically about a week and a half, so.
Ms. Shelby.
So a comment and a question. Apparently, the Tiger Grant is the transportation investment generating economic recovery, and it's supposed to be specifically for projects that do provide economic development. So it seems like this would be a perfect match for that, because no one who drives down through that section between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m. is going to want to put their business there. Right now.
Yeah.
So my question is, do you need, because of the short length of time, do you need a motion to have you do a letter of support or just discussion?
Just really discussion on that piece. I just want to bring it before City Council, just to make sure there weren't adamant feelings against it or something. But I view this as a very interesting opportunity, frankly, to get what we want, frankly, which is fully functional Commercial Drive, so.
Well, and I think it's really good for us to work on working together with Walla Walla. So for both of those reasons, I think this is an excellent idea, because that's a bargain.
Yeah. Mr. Peterson.
So the current configuration we have with commercial drive coming into Myra was kind of a burden to the city, and we're still paying for that.
Yeah.
We would continue to pay for that even though they might reconfigure it?
Well, as far as, if they reconfigure it to the roundabout, the agreement is that with Commercial Drive, that would be fully opened up, which is what's the benefit to us. As far as right now, are we paying for the lost business opportunity? And from that perspective, yes, because there actually is a business that wants to go right at the corner, and it's holding flux right now because they want a fully functional Commercial Drive. It actually would be a nice sit-down restaurant if we could get that going. So that's really why this is exciting.
Mr. Peterson.
This is intriguing. What I'm sensing here, there is a complete change in the view of the two cities as far as it goes to the access to the park. I mean, this is, for me, this is good news. At one point, Myra was going to have no access off of it, you know, for businesses. That was one of the discussions. And so now, it's nice to see some collaboration and, yeah, a positive development.
It definitely is, and I just want to please caution you, this is just on this intersection. I've asked that we have a broader level of discussion about the whole Myra Road corridor, but just keep in mind that this is the only piece we've.
It's not the override, I understand. Yeah.
It's a step in the right direction.
Yeah, it's a step. Any other questions for Mr. Zatell?
Thank you very much. Chief, I believe you're back on.
It's my night.
Well, we want to make sure you get plenty of exercise going back.
So there is, did you guys include a presentation? I hope you have. I can do this. I do have a presentation, a PowerPoint presentation that's on there. All right, you get your short version. There it is. Okay, so that's the DUI emergency response expense cost recovery. This is an RCW under 58520430. And I'm just kind of going real quick here, but then, so what's put in intent for this is to allow a public agency recovery expense of an emergency response to an incident involving emergency students operating a vehicle under the influence of alcohol or drugs. So recovery of expenses shall not supplement, but not supplant provisions, so meaning when we get restitution from, say, DUI IRS, the money will go towards future proactive enforcement and more DUI IRS. And that's kind of the key of this RCW, so. And there's the RCW right there, we're going. We just did information on where the emergency is. Up to four crimes includes homicide, DUI, operating aircraft, anything like that, and water vessels. So basically, anything, alcohol or drug impairment, it would be applicable to this. Public agencies, state, city, county, municipal, lots of state patrol uses this, a lot of other agencies, other cities, similar size, everything. Regional costs incurred by public agencies, we've been recently making a corporate emergency response to the incident, it shall only include those costs after the rising from response to the incident. So you can include costs of any overtime, any straight time, if the fire department responds, any of those types of costs to the incident. Requirements, this classification caused the accident or the incident resulting in a corporate emergency response, and no illicit crimes is charged for it from DUI. Emergency is a normal police response under the law. Seen possible DUI driver as a traffic stop, it warrants emergency lights assigned, so it's actually an action that could just be a traffic stop. Superior municipal courts have upheld it, and they can establish restitution to the agency involved. So there are limitations. Maximum penalty is, or maximum restitution is $2,500 per incident. So if you had a, for instance, we just had a huge accident here about three weeks ago, there were several cars involved. It included a detective, three officers, an officer from another agency, and the fire department. That probably would have been close to that $2,500 unit right there on that, but most of them were generally two or three hours in time. One of the other things, too, the law only allows the police department to receive the money, no one else can receive the money from this RCW. Arrest processing, investigations, etc., it all initial cost recovery form. So the officers will have a form to fill out, but they'll turn it into a case report, they'll give it to a rating, and it will take it, show it, present it to the court, and ask for restitution at a time. So, no, Sarah.
Mr. Peterson, yeah, restitution would be from the individual?
Would be from the original that was arrested.
Interance, their insurance.
They, I.
This is directly.
No, I don't mean to.
No insurance.
No, I think it's just, it's a civil fine, basically, restitution from the question of your lawsuit.
Okay.
It's a civil fine. Talks about civil liability. We can go a little bit on, but again, so, order whether by the court or not, if there is a provision or for prosecution, the defendant owes the agency full of the portion. They'll send a letter to the defendant. They'll send a letter to the defendant requesting an agreement, admission alternatives, small claims court, or request the agency. This Sarah will have to set the count, and that will go easy, that count. So a simple DUI arrest for a traffic stop, officer spends the estimate four hours, the processing report trade goes, etc., toll costs is $119, based on $48 an hour cost. This is the city of Gallups that gives us. So a cost recovery example, one patrol officer, $48 an hour responsive, response of three traffic pedestrians called out, like one hundred displaying, five hours of call, results in a cost of $400, still under the $2,500 max. So this gives an example of some estimates, what an agency could look at, depending on how many hours they have towards DUI IRS. I'm not naming the year of this for our rest and our community, but it does give you an idea, this is the city of Gallups example that they use. So I mean, $32,000 that they estimate that they'd be raising for here for DUI IRS. That all goes back into traffic, all pushing. Give you another example. Just more estimates and examples. So it just gives you an idea of basically what it is. So what this does is allows us to move forward and collect restitution that goes back into more traffic safer, make our streets safer here in Olah's Place.
So definitely rate, you know, I guess there could be an allocation for employee benefits to that. So if an officer makes X number, I don't know, you could allocate an additional 30% off of that for employee benefits, or what? Or is it?
It's hourly, it's salary, so what we're doing, what we do it, so we have DUI cost reform, you have direct cost.
I got it, okay.
Yep, exactly. And so what we do is we'll have a form, the officers will just, all they have to do is fill out their names, the incident, the defendant, how many hours they're involved, it shows their hourly rate, and then if it's two hours of regular time, one hour of overtime, it all adds up, boom, that's the cost.
But to your point, it's both salary and benefits, not just straight salary.
Well, that's the.
That's the hourly cost.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Peterson.
Ms. Shelby.
So would this be simply for the officers that end up following through? Because I'm thinking of an incident in a completely different jurisdiction a few years back where I had to call 911 and for EMS and potential law enforcement, and I kid you not, we had eight police cars show up. And I heard one of the policemen saying to one of the other policemen, maybe we should coordinate this a little better. So we ended up with two policemen that actually really took charge and did everything, and everybody else kind of stood around for a little while and then left. So in that instance, I would kind of hate to, it wasn't DUI, so it wouldn't qualify, but you know, if it just happened to be a shift change or something, and everybody and their brother shows up, and would we really just charge for the people who actually worked on it?
Well, first, you don't have to worry about that call swipe, so you're on your side.
True, but I'm wondering about, you know, you send out a call, and maybe you get somebody from the State Patrol and Walla Walla, and everybody shows up, and then they're like, okay, you got it, we're gone.
Well, for a normal DUI traffic stop, you wouldn't see that, and that's the, and I had to say, that's the community. For a major accident or a more significant accident, you are going to have assistance from other agencies, and there's a reason for it. And in your perception, you know, same in law enforcement, perception is reality, so those people that aren't doing anything were probably doing something, so that's, there's all of that.
Well, I thought that because they said to each other, why are there so many of us here? We need to coordinate better.
And that, sometimes that happens.
Yeah, so but it's, I mean, I wouldn't begrudge the two or three that actually worked on it, but they were very professional, did a great job.
So I'm really promoting compared driving enforcement in the state with my guys, over the last three weeks, we had three DUI IRS. So I'm seeing an increase in that as we're bringing attention to it, and it's a problem in our state, and it's here in our state, too, so.
Well, this looks like a good alternative.
Yeah.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Zatell, do you want to just make a comment on the capital improvement plan?
I'll just make comments, because as presented as an administrative report at the last meeting, I just urge everyone in council, please take a look at the capital improvement equipment replacement plan for 2018 and 2023. Thank you, Zatell, department heads, for helping me put this together, but it just has a map of where the various projects are, pictures, and the, it really gives you a good snapshot of the various needs we have. When you make one of these plans, it isn't that all of this will be accomplished, but it's what we hope to accomplish, so it's a living document. So please take a look at this, because it'll really help guide the discussions as we get further along with the budget line.
Thank you, Mr. Zatell.
Is there any other business to bring before the council? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
It's been moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Dickerson, seconded equally by Ms. Shelby and Ms. Nighting, and all in favor, please.